Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Thank you for coming today. We have a beautiful crowd. So let's give ourselves a nice round of applause for that because everybody's here and happy first thing in the morning. Thank you. We're going to break a little bit from the program. Mrs. Barbetti will be up soon, but I'm going to let the commissioners speak first because, just so you know, this is my first year as president. No, no, no. That was... What I mean is, it was my first year, and of course, I scheduled this meeting on the same day that the commissioners have a board meeting. Pat O'Malley said to me, "Laurie, next time, just call us." And I said, "Okay." So anyway, they're going to leave, so we want them to come up first to recognize our speakers, and then we'll start from the beginning, so breaking a little in tradition. So we'd like to have the commissioners come up and acknowledge our folks. They have a certificate here for them. And Patrick O'Malley first. Commissioner O'Malley.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy Wednesday to everyone. To all of our honorees, Judge McLaughlin, Candace Kelly for WBRE, Diane Baldi. Congratulations. You know, this is a great honor. The Women's Commission has so many great people that have been honored through the years in this room and other rooms through the years. The women are of great distinction. They give back. There isn't a woman that's in this room that hasn't contributed to the community. And what bothers me about life is a lot of times, people just don't give back. How much better would all of us be if everybody gave 5% back? Or if someone opened up a door, or said, "God bless you," or just hello? I mean, it's not that hard to make someone else's life better. So for all of us, please, try to get someone to go out and do a better job in caring about other people, because the world's about caring, and we have to care about each other, or no one else will, so... But with that being said, I'd just like to hit upon hospice of the Sacred Heart. My father died in 1992. In 1992, there was no such thing as hospice. You never heard that word. It's like, what the heck's hospice? My brother-in-law was a social worker, and he assisted us. We had my father at house for about a month, and it was just getting really tough. He had a malignant tumor in his brain, and it was cancerous, and he was getting worse and worse, and he would have mood swings. It was really scary. So he said to me, he goes, "You know, we gotta sit down with the rest of the family. We gotta figure out what we're gonna do with your dad." And Moses Taylor was the only hospice unit in Lackawanna County at that time. And my dad died two months later, and he died with dignity. So to the hospice of Sacred Heart, thank you for everything that you do, because you make families feel better in a horrible time when they're trying to make sure that their person, their family member, their loved one dies with dignity. So I'd just like to thank everyone for what they do. I'd like to thank all of our honorees. Congratulations to all of you, and to the hospice of Sacred Heart, and to our Lackawanna County Commission for Women, especially to Lori Cadden. She's gonna do a great job, and she's done a great job so far. So thank you very much. And remember, commissioners' meetings are on two Wednesdays a month.
Thank you, Lorraine.
You're welcome, Lorraine.
I share the same name with Lori Cadden. But since we both have a name that's difficult for some people, and we end up being called Lori or Lori, I always try to address her as Lorraine. So thank you for your work, and congratulations on your presidency. As the first female commissioner of Lackawanna County, I'm honored to stand here with the women that are being honored as well today, Candace Kelly and Trish Corbett. I see your bookmarks. One of the greatest things that I saw when we had the bookmarks was Candace Kelly had a, what, was that a TV commercial come over our show?
Breaking news.
Breaking news. It was awesome. So if any of you get a chance to watch the ECTV program on that, just, you know, try and get through that and look at it, and see how great that was. She did an awesome job. And I'm honored to stand here before you with these wonderful women and our wonderful Commission for Women, Lori Cadden, Debbie Peterson, Fran Stupakovich, Marilyn Vitale Flynn, Bernadette LaPree, and Donna Barbetti. What an awesome job you have done for our county. Thank you so much, and thank you for recognizing all women in every venue. I greatly appreciate it as the Republican on this commission, and I look forward to the future working with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Nottary, Annie, please.
Thanks, Laurie. This is an organization that's really dear to my heart. My wife was the first executive director of this many, many years ago when it was first inceptioned. It's a good organization. They do a lot of great things. I recently had to deal with Sacred Heart Hospice. It does do a wonderful job for everyone in a difficult time. The honorees are always special people. It's always, it's always an honor to be around this organization. It has grown considerably. It's a much more vibrant organization than it was when it first started. It's something that is important to the, to the community, that everyone does get involved. And it's something, when I was first elected in the 1980s, I was the first row office holder to choose a woman as a deputy that had never been done in Lackawanna County before. I think it's important. I think women are a very important part of moving forward in this world. They have a different perspective than men do. And I think it's important that you all do what you think is right, and encourage your male counterparts, whether it's brothers, sisters, husbands, to be a better person, because I think that's what the women bring to us. I want to thank you all, and good luck.
We're going to do Fran. Where's Fran? We're gonna take a few photos and get right back to this. So thank you. Bear with us. Talk amongst yourselves. We'll be right back. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, hello. We're ready to start. Thank you for... Bye, Jer. Again, like I said, I'm bad on the dates, so that's why they had to run. But thank you for dealing with us. And I'm going to call up Mrs. Barbetti, Mrs. Donna Barbetti, who is the immediate past president of the Commission for Women.
Relax, I'm not back. And thank God I'm not back. And I don't have to be. At the last breakfast, when I handed my dear friend Lori Cadden her gavel to take over as president, I assured you that she was gonna do a fantastic job, that she was gonna bring a whole new dimension to our commission, to build on the work that Jamil did for so many years, and what I attempted to do for so many years. And we weren't disappointed. When we were talking about chair for the breakfast and different events, et cetera, especially for this breakfast, we were looking over the list of the very, very competent people that we have on this commission. And when we looked it over, we thought, hey, we've got somebody who was really, really terrific at emceeing events, and really and truly could do a terrific job. So we decided to have Lori Cadden do it, because you know what? The Lackawanna County Commission for Women, we've got talent. Introduce to you Lori Cadden, our president.
Okay. Do you see this beautiful lady all down here? Her name is Sister Marila Farfor Ihm, and that's very important, Ihm. She is going to give us our prayer. I'm taking the microphone to her. I have to tell you a quick story. One time, I had to take up the gifts to St. Patrick's Day, and Bishop Timlin was on, he was reading Mass. And it was St. Patrick's Day, and Melinda Gallardi was in front of me, and I was behind her, and she went, and she went right up on the altar to the bishop, and I'm going, "Melinda, Melinda, where are you going?" And she's going, and Jo Quinn was like, to me. Okay, so I walk up, and I hand the gifts, and I walk back to my seat, and I happened to call Matt Flynn the next day, the late, great Matt Flynn. And I said, "Matt, I had no idea what I was doing." I said, "Doesn't the priest, don't you usually wait that the..." He said, "Only you would think the bishop should come to you to pick up the gifts." True story. I'm like, "Well, I didn't..." Anyway, so I'm going to Sister Marila right now. We're taking it, we're taking it on the road to Sister. See, I need to do it to you, Sister. There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much, Laurie. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and I too am my welcome to yours. Now, let us please place ourselves in the presence of God. Precious God, we praise you and thank you for the many gifts and blessings you have bestowed upon us. We come to you now, our Creator God, to beg your assistance in saving and restoring the beautiful earth you gave us, presently being destroyed by so many natural disasters, fires, hurricanes, floods, earthquakes, and the greatest calamity of all, war. We, the world's children, to whom you gave the gift of life, pray with you, Father of us all, to stop the killing, the violence, the hatred. Compassionate God, guide the leaders of our nations to your ways of justice, mercy, and love. Encourage them to be peaceful neighbors, careful stewards, stewards of the earth, reaching out and sharing with all who are in need. Spirit of God, teach our American leaders to actively listen for and heed your call to seek, to serve, and provide for those most in need, rather than be self-serving or politically motivated. Empower our local and world leaders to be compassionate towards all, no matter what race, color, or creed, treating each person with respect and dignity. Give them the strength to oppose what is wrong in words which are bold, clear, and still non-threatening. Grant them the desire to act responsibly and legally in their attitudes and actions, avoiding words which perpetuate violence, rather than should speak in love from a nonviolent heart. Generous and loving God, we knock at your door in great need with fear and trepidation, trusting in you to strengthen our local, national, and world leaders in their conviction to seek justice for all, and to serve as beacons of hope to people everywhere. For this we pray.
Okay, thank you, Sister. I'd like to also, we're gonna start breakfast in a minute, but I want to introduce three lovely ladies. And I'm not gonna sing the Brady Bunch to a song, but just because, did I mark? Okay, yeah, okay. We have Lackawanna County's three female judges in attendance with us today. Since this is Commission for Women, I'd like to introduce them to you. We have the first female ever as judge in Lackawanna County, Trish Corbett. And last, and we hope certainly not last, are you getting my drift here, everybody? Certainly not last, Julia Mundley, everyone. Thank you, guys. And I want to tell you, too, we have just a quick announcement. Congressman McDade, as you know, passed away a few months ago, weeks ago, actually. And he served our community for 36 years in Congress. At the University of Scranton in McIlhenny Ballroom at Denable Center, on the 28th of October at 10:00 in the morning, there will be a memorial service for Congressman Joe McDade. If anybody's interested, it is open to the public. Please feel free to go. And as Trish said, bottom line is, he's, he's never forgot us, so let's not forget him. So if you can make it there, please do. And I know Joe's looking down on us now while we're talking about him. So thank you very much. And everybody, enjoy breakfast, and we'll be right back. Please continue eating your breakfast. We're just gonna move along. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'd like to thank the commissioners who had to leave early. I'd love to thank the Commission for Women, and I would ask that all of the board members for the Commission for Women, please stand and be recognized. All of the board members. Thank you. They do a great job, and believe me, everybody works together on this board, which is what I love. And I thank each and every one of you for your help, for bringing our, the folks to this breakfast this morning, and for all the work. My dear right and left hands, Donna Barbetti and Marilyn Vitale Flynn and Byrne, we really, you know, executive committee kind of all pulls together with that, so thank you so much for helping. Also, I would like to personally thank Donna Barbetti. Donna, who I have come after, is one of my dearest friends, and trust me, if Donna is your friend, you are a very lucky person. I love her, and I thank you for everything you do for me and your love. Thank you. Also, yes. Jamil Zaden, who was, she was the president for a long time before Donna. Jamil is a wonderful lady, a Westsider. I couldn't say that about Donna. I had to get Westside in. Jamil I know from a long time ago. One time, she actually came to McDonald's with my mother and four kids. Jamil, we picked her up at her house, and she doesn't remember this, but we went to McDonald's, four of us, my sister and two brothers, my mother and Jamil, and of course, my mother and Jamil split a cheeseburger. Typical women behavior when you're older, when you're like after children, you don't wanna, "Gee, we..." Eat the cheeseburger. Anyway, right, Mom? Aunt Cadmoren's in the house, my mother, just so you know, she's here. She makes me call her Aunt Cadmoren. I can't even call her Mom. It's what I have to call her. Now she's saying I don't, but trust me. That's what my father had to call her, too. Anyway, also, we have, I'd like to introduce two people, well, three people. Jamil, who brings, always brings, as Marilyn Vitale said to me this morning, God love that Jamil, God love her. Only in Scranton we say, "God love her for everything." She brings 11 people today. I said, "I know, we all could bring that man. We wouldn't have enough room in this place." So thank you to Jamil and all of her, all of the people she brought with her. And I just have to say, she has with her, and you know all the changes that went on at Penn State, so it's now Penn State Scranton, she has the president of Penn State with her, who is a great guy. He's on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, President, excuse me, President Wafa, and his wife, I want to make sure I say this, Sahar is with them. They're at Jamil's table. Very, very nice. I'm gonna tell you, President Wafa never stops smiling. We could be talking about serious stuff at the Chamber, Dan Santinello, true or not, he's always smiling and always happy. It must be the Penn State thing. President, we are Penn State. There you go. And also, thank you for joining us. Also, we have Steve Daniloff in the house. Now, I have to tell you a little bit about Steve. Not only is he Candace Kelly's boss, but Steve is the nicest man in the world. Now, he, before him, his predecessor was Bob B. Everybody knew Bob. Bob was big and burly, and everyone loved him. And Steve has been with BRE for a long time, and he's now the general manager. And I have to tell you, from any of the nonprofits I deal with, both Hospice of the Sacred Heart, the Scranton Cultural Center, Broadway Theater, all three wonderful organizations that I happen to be involved with, and they are our partners, and they are wonderful, and we thank them. And Steve is in the house supporting Candace, and we thank you and welcome and good job there, Steve Daniloff, everybody. So those are two, you know, we figured we'll point you guys out. We also have Colleen Egan Garrity, who's representing Matt Cartwright in the house today. She's over here. Matt was unable to be here, or he would have been, and we have the lovely Therese Casey representing her husband, Senator Bob Casey, in the house. We can always count on them. They're usually here, unable to come today. I think maybe they had a commissioners' board meeting, too. I don't know, but we're batting a thousand with that. So, okay, so, we're all good. I think I have everybody. So I'd like to start by telling you Candace's little girl's up here with us. If you didn't notice, it's Chloe. And Candace, when she received this honor, she said... Well, she waved. I love it. So Candace has two girls, Grace and Chloe, and Candace said, "Laurie, I can't, my husband is out of town. He's on, in training. I don't have anybody." I said, "Listen, we are a commission of women. Women are, this is what we do. We multitask, we do it well, and we all know what it's like to raise children." So I said, "Bring her with us. She'll be welcome." So what do you think of little Chloe? Now, what Lorraine Cummings actually meant when she was looking at the bookmarks is that this year, the Commission for Women, just so you know, to recap our year, we do a bookmark contest with 7th graders in all of the school districts to encourage them to write about a woman who they believe should be recognized and on a bookmark. And then they submit them through many of the teachers, and we, as a group, pick who we think are the best bookmarks based on artistic value and their writing and what they say about the individual. So this year, three of our people who won, the three, we had six people, actually, but two of them happened to be here. And that's why Lorraine mentioned Judge Corbett, because Judge Trish Corbett was one of the recipients, and she was a bookmark for us this year. So thank you to the judge. She was very happy with that. Pardon me?
The thinnest I've ever been.
Donna.
She's signing bookmarks, if anybody, Judge Corbett.
And so, anyway, that was great. And someone also, a little boy, which was wonderful, actually submitted Candace's name. And Candace, which is what we said earlier, it was so beautiful, it was done at the commissioner's office, and they, WBRE, had the cameras there, and it was a pretend sort of breaking news. And I can never forget Julia Mundley's face when this happened, because it was at the time when Judge Kozic was missing. So we were in the room, and the breaking news, and Julia's face said it all. She thought, "Oh, they found him, they found..." And it was not about the judge at all, it was about the contest, but it was, they, thank God, they found the judge. But I'm just saying, it was so, it was beautifully done, and we were honored for that. So that's what Lorraine meant, not to not include Mrs. Diane Baldi-RN and the judge, that's how, this lovely Judge Maria. So we're happy we're all here. Mayor Cartwright had to leave as well. Judge Mundley had to leave. And now we are left with the three remaining lovely women, who we are going to hear their stories of, how they got to where they are, why we chose them. And just so you know, you're nominated by the group of 30 or so women, and you're voted on by the same people. So people put in nominations, and then the board will vote. So first up is our keynote speaker, and I just love her. I don't know, she's been working the room well here. Judge Maria McLaughlin, who is with the Cometh Police Court of Philadelphia. Maria is, has been practicing law since 1992, am I correct? She went to Penn State University, and then she went to Widener Law School. She was with the District Attorney's Office in Philadelphia for 19 years. And she is here to talk to you and give you a little bit of information about what it's like to be down in, I guess, southeast Pennsylvania. You're gonna hear a little bit about Maria McLaughlin.
Thank you so much. And for many of you who have heard me speak, I just speak from the heart. I very rarely have anything written down, but when I was, knew I was coming here today, and Laurie gave me this honor, I saw a quote, and I just thought it was so appropriate, and it's, "Behind every successful woman is a tribe of other successful women who have her back." And that's exactly how I feel every time I come into Lackawanna County. The Lackawanna County women have just taken me under their wing. Over this last year campaigning statewide, there's nothing more exciting to me than when I get to come to this county and have a group of women who are so supportive of me, especially coming from Philadelphia. To be honored by a group of women from Lackawanna County is just so special. And so, because you have so many wonderful women here, so many wonderful women who mean a lot to me, you have Shirley Barrett, you have Madame McNulty, you have Mari Kelly and Fran Kovalesky, and Judges Corbett, Farrell, Turle, Judges Corbett, who we have to vote yes, Moyle, and my cousin, Julia Mundley. She's not, but I say she is, because somebody, somebody asked me, and we were joking, and so now, every time I come in, I'm not denying it, she's my cousin. You can't go wrong in Scranton with that last name. And I need to win. And also, you had a female as the leading group of your bar association, with Mary Patterson. And as a mother of an aspiring chef, we can't forget Kathy Gaveran, who's here and food fed us today, and this wonderful establishment. So thank you. But again, I just tell the story about myself, because I find that it resonates, and it's just like each and every one of you, it's no different. I grew up not from a family of means. I grew up in West Philadelphia in a row home. And if it wasn't for my partial Penn State scholarship for cheerleading, I probably wouldn't have a college degree. That's just the bottom line. We didn't have the money to send just two of us to college. And so I was fortunate. I got that scholarship. People used to joke when I said cheerleading scholarship. Yes, it's my cheerleading scholarship that afforded me a college education. And as I was telling the sister, I come from a family, my mom's two sisters were nuns. to be chief of a division of attorneys that is larger than most District Attorney's Offices throughout this Commonwealth, I was really proud and humbled, and I didn't take it lightly. I would always, from day one, going into the office, say, she would, the biggest cases would come in, and that's why I always went into the District Attorney's Office, because I thought I wanted to get right into court, and that was the way to do it. But a big case would come in, and she would say, "Well, who wants to do this?" And I would, "I do, I want to do this case." And she would say, "Can you handle this case?" And I said, "Well, I don't know, but I'm going to try, and yeah, I can handle it." And it put me on the front page of the papers. She gave me that opportunity. I don't know if it was somebody else, I would have that opportunity. I took over for a man who was in that position for 35 years, and I made sure, when I left that office, it's now held by a woman. So I made sure of that, and I'm proud of that. I'm divorced, now I'm remarried, but I was divorced most of my life. And so, when I first started campaigning statewide, and I would hear everybody tell their stories and stand up, I was married for 39 years, and I was married for 24 years, I was actually a little embarrassed and hesitant to then get up there and give my story as a single mom. And so, my story's just like many, and I think I knew from the first time when I got divorced, that's when I knew I was strong. My husband left, we were separated for years. He decided to leave days before Christmas. Days after I just came home from having a hysterectomy, and knew I couldn't, I wasn't mobile, decided to take the Christmas tree and the John Deere mower off of the property despite he was moving into an apartment. Dropping bleach on this rug accidentally, all while my boys were at school. So guess what I learned then? All it took was a telephone, and my life was changed in a day. I called my aunts that were nuns, they took my kids and surprised them at school and said, "Guess what, you're going to stay overnight with us." And my kids called, because I would never let them stay anywhere on a school night, I was strict, and I said, "No, you can stay overnight." And I called my brother, and all my male friends with muscle, and I got on the phone and I called 1-800 for the rugs, Empire. Never heard of them except for on the commercials. And in 24 hours, they came and put new rugs out. My kids had IKEA furniture, they're boys, they don't notice, they got the same furniture the next day, all put together by my friends, and by the time my boys came home the next day, I took out Christmas decorations that I had saved from when they were growing up, the homemade ones. And so, bought the same tree and just put them up and said, "This was special, this is, I wanted to change the tree." So I think that's when I knew how strong I was, that in 24 hours, my physical life was turned right back to where it was. And so, that's my story, and that's when people say, you know, who you are and what makes you who you are. I stood up at the next campaign event and said, "I'm a single mom." And I couldn't believe how it resonated, not just with young women and single mothers, but with young men who were coming up to me and saying, "Judge, you got my vote, I was raised by a single mom, it's not what I wanted, but it's what my circumstances were, and I'm proud of it." Now I'm proud of it, and I say it everywhere I go, because it's just like everybody in this room. So when I decided to run for Court of Common Pleas, and what I say in most times is that the scariest thing I ever had to do in the District Attorney's Office was not prosecute, it was resign to run for judge. And it's because of the two boys on the back of that palm card. I was a single mom and scared to death, saying, "What am I doing?" And my boys were like, "Are you crazy? What are you doing, Mom? Nobody else is here." And I said, "Win or lose, they're going to know that their mother has guts." And so, I had 70 vacation days saved in the bank, and that's what I used to run for judge. And then, my mother was diagnosed with cancer, and I said, "This is a little bit too much, even on my plate." I was used to multitasking, but I said, "This isn't my time, I have to take care of my mom." Well, my mom, unbeknownst to me, in Rittenhouse Square, there's a big park, and she stood outside that park with no hair, going through chemo, and got me every single signature that I needed to be on the ballot to run for Court of Common Pleas. And that's how I became a candidate for Court of Common Pleas, because of my mother, because she said, "Oh, you're going to do this." And I did. And so, fortunately, it worked out, and now I'm a judge in the Court of Common Pleas, and my mom is still now here with me, still battling, but now going through the chemo lounges once again with my palm cards. My daughter's now running for statewide office, and I need you one more time. So when people say to me, you know, "How is it, where do you get this energy to visit 67 counties and still be a judge in Philadelphia each and every day?" Because we still preside over cases. And I say, "That's where I get my grit, that's where I get the desire and the energy to run for judge." I never forget, since I took my oath of office, where I come from. I open my courtrooms up every Friday to young women. They don't have to be lawyers, they can be high school students or college students. It's a good day for me, because it's a half day of motions, and after courtroom, I order pizzas, and they can ask whatever questions they want, because I'm so proud that I actually can do this and give back, that I'm in a position that people actually care to hear my story. And I think it's imperative to each and every one of us who is in a position to give back to other women, because that's how we become strong. And so, I've never once missed a day of work since I took my oath of office, and I've never had a decision of mine overturned, and I'm proud of that record. And I don't want to discount all the men in here, because like I said, I'm now remarried, and my husband is right back here, Jonathan Seidel. And I can't imagine having... And I can't imagine having a better man next to me, who's proud of everything that I do, who's traveling with me now so he can go to Erie tomorrow and speak, while I have to be in Indiana and Westmoreland. And so, we can't, as women, discount the important men that stand beside us, whether they're our husbands or friends, or fathers, or brothers. I, I'm fortunate to have had a dad, I lost him way too young, at 60 years old, but boy, he never told me to hold back, and he always said, from when we used to go to Sunday dinners at my grandmother's house, and when I was just 10, 12 years old, and all the women fed all the men, and the men stood, sat there and discussed whatever was going on while we cleaned up, until I said, "Oh, I'm not cleaning up until my brother cleans up." And so, I said, "This is not the way it's going to be." And so, my father was so supportive of me and everything that I do, as is my brother. And I think it's important for women like me to know, there's nothing wrong with leaning on men, you just have to pick the right ones to do it with. And so, I can't thank the women of Lackawanna County enough, for again, taking me under your wing. When I come here, I really do feel like family. I joke about Judge Munley and the Egans, who really have taken me under their wing, but I do feel like family every time I come into this county. You have been so supportive of me, and I think that it's important for women to expand our group, our tribe, all over this Commonwealth, because we need to be running for these offices, to think that 100 years ago, we couldn't vote. And to now think of, look at the female judges, look at all the females that you have, leading organizations like this, it's a wonderful thing. So I do what I do for my stepdaughter with special needs, for all the young women who come into my courtroom every Friday, for our granddaughters and nieces and young college girls, to know that we can break this glass ceiling each and every day together. So thank you so much, Lackawanna County ladies, for having me. My name is Judge Maria McLaughlin, and I will always remember Lackawanna County and hope to come back a winner. Thank you.
Isn't she great? I love her. I interviewed her, I have to move this up, Judge, a little bit. I interviewed Judge McLaughlin at the Society of Irish Women for ECTV, and I fell in love with her instantly. And then Donna Barbetty met Judge McLaughlin through the Commission for Women, statewide commission, and we just loved her. And we, we hope you enjoyed this empowering speech by a lovely, lovely woman. Thank you. Thanks, Judge. Okay, up next, we have, we're going to let Candace Kelly speak first, because Diane Baldi-RN will be doing both Diane and Hospice of the Sacred Heart. So Candace Kelly, as you all know, this beautiful woman sitting up here, who you see nightly on WBRE, is a wonderful, wonderful person in general. She just, she's got a soul that's brighter than most, she cares about our community, she cares about people. Again, little Chloe is with her, Steve's here to support her. She, anytime we need her, and Diane, we can attest, WBRE, anyone else, not to say it again, but Broadway, anybody, Cultural Center, always there to help. Candace is a great lady, she comes from Minnesota, she, you said Lloyd Lakes, Lionel Lakes, see? I bet. And you said it's not far from the Twin Cities, and as Diane said, what did you say about her?
Minnesota nice.
Minnesota nice, when we talked about her. So Candace majored at the Minnesota State University in mass media, she's been with WBRE since 2004, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about herself when she comes up, so if we could all give a nice round of applause for Ms. Candace Kelly.
Thank you. Wow, this is a great way to start the day, being surrounded by so many amazing people and women, and everyone supporting each other from various walks of life, so thank you, I'm very honored and blessed to be here this morning. I'm tired though, I'm not going to lie. And thanks for letting me have my little sidekick with me today too, appreciate that. I came here, as Laurie said, in 2004 from Minnesota. The goal was to kind of get more experience in television news, and maybe go back to Minneapolis and do the TV thing there. But I met and fell in love with my husband, and he sucked me right in. And I'm so glad he did, because this is such an amazing area to live in. There are so many wonderful people here, and I feel very blessed to be able to be in love and being here and doing what I love, and I'm very grateful that my employer is flexible to allow me to do the family thing and, and do my career at the same time. I'm not going to lie to you, it's not an easy career, sometimes it's great, sometimes it's not. I love it because it makes a difference, it can make a difference if it's done well. And I think Eyewitness News does a good job of that. We try to tell positive stories, those are my favorite stories. People ask all the time, "What's your favorite story?" Or "Do you have one from memory?" There's nothing specific of a favorite story, but they're always the ones that make a difference or melt your heart. Or when you see a little girl doing a fundraiser for hurricane victims, and maybe she's not the most popular kid in the school, but she does it, and it's a success. Those are the stories I love to tell. There's a lot of bad stuff that goes on in this world, we know. You turn on the news, we talk about it all the time. We do that because it's part of our community, it's reality. Sometimes you have to talk about things and bring attention to things that aren't as comforting, but it's part of our world. But at the end of the day, if there's something positive you can take away from that, the helpers that are there on the scene during the mass shootings, focus on the positive of what's going on, that's what makes, what keeps me going in this business, is that I believe that in this challenging time that we have these days, that you can make a difference, mostly because I'm hoping my daughter will have a positive world to grow up in. And it's not always negative, like I said, we, the world is in so doom and gloom, but I just, it's what makes, keeps me going every single day, is the positive stories, the hearing the success stories, where we have female judges, and we have so many successful women to celebrate, and men too, and just the community all rallying around to support each other. This business that I'm in, you got to have thick skin. You hear all the good stuff, every once in a while, like, it's wonderful being here, you guys are coming up saying you watch, and I really appreciate that. But there also, there's always like one comment, and it's usually not to your face, it's the online comments or something that stick with you, and it's hard, but it keeps you going. Like, you know what, somebody, whoever wrote the comment, maybe they, they don't like watching because they don't like what I wear, how I look, or maybe I stuttered one night and it just totally turned them off, and I get it. You know, we all have our things that we like and don't like, not everyone is going to like you. But one thing I have learned in this business is that we all come from different backgrounds. Maybe that person is going through something in life that isn't the best, so if they say something or try to drag you down, it's because maybe they're not in the best place. So, I look at those comments, and believe me, it took me a long time to get to this point, because you hear things that aren't so flattering, or people, when they say, "I don't like you," or whatever the comment is, "You're fat," or whatever. It hurts, it stings, but you're like, "No, no, 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 it's coming from a different place, they're coming from, they're saying that for a reason." And you got to kind of look beyond that. And it took me a long time in this business to get comfortable enough to say, to look beyond those negative comments, and say that there's something there, and to kind of empathize a little bit with whoever is writing, or texting, or calling the station. But I think that if we all kind of take that approach a little bit, kindness can grow a little bit deeper, and then grow a little bit farther in our own communities. I feel very blessed to be here, and very honored and grateful that my employer keeps me around, hopefully for years to come. Because I really do think that we can make a difference, so if you guys have any positive story ideas that you want to shoot our way, we'd be more than happy to share them with all of you and share them with all of our viewers, not just in Lackawanna County, but everywhere. Thank you again for honoring me, let me be a part of this special day, and this breakfast, amazing food, and just, I really appreciate, I really appreciate being here, and that I was even considered, because this is, this is something special, so thank you.
She's clapping for you. Chloe, what'd you think of Mom? Did she do a good job? Thumbs up? Yeah, there you go. I love it. Okay, next up, we have Diane Baldi-RN. Diane is a graduate of Mercy Hospital School of Nursing. Wow, when did that, when was that no longer?
Five years ago, I guess.
Five years ago, she graduated. She did a lot in five years, trust me, wait till you hear. But Diane also went to Marywood, she lives in Scranton with her wonderful husband, Michael Baldi, who's here in the audience, and two of her beautiful children, Mary Kate and Carolyn are also here. She also has a son, as she says, the Crown Prince, or the Prince, whatever, Michael, who isn't with us today, but, girls, you know, I ask you, I'm stealing it. What does your mother say? "I want to take you," your mother said, "They're mine." So I'm trying. But anyway, Diane, I have to say, Diane is an incredible lady. When you hear her story, and please pay attention to the beginning of how Hospice of the Sacred Heart started. It is chilling, it is moving, it is an unbelievable beginning to an unbelievable organization that's about 14 years old. It is, there's so many people, right here, we have a whole group of 10 people who are here to help celebrate and pay attention to the work that Hospice does. It is not just, there's no discrimination. It is pure people at their, and families at their most vulnerable time, who they help and talk to. And trust me, when Diane tells me stories, I'll probably cry right now, because there isn't a day that goes by that I don't tear up in some way of a story for what they do, for what they represent, for the people who come in and out of the lives of these wonderful people at Hospice of the Sacred Heart. They have their headquarters in Wilkes-Barre, their 10-bed unit in Dunmore, and a center for education on Montage Mountain Road in Music. And when I tell you that they are top, first-class nonprofit, run so beautifully, and with just the care and the compassion that they take, and trust me when I tell you, nurses have a somewhat, I think, cavalier way of, eh, it's this, it's that. I mean, I grew up with the nurse, that's why I'm scared to death, and Diane will tell you, "Don't tell me about anything, because I'm scared of it all." Because my mother would come home and tell every story about every, you know, talking about, not the person, but just, "It's this, it's that," and I thought, "Oh God, I have that disease, oh my God." It was always something. Because when you grow up in a family where that's discussed, so now I'm, it's almost like, here you are again in the hospice world, and you hear all this stuff, but the beauty of hospice is the stuff they do, and the care they take to the people, again, in the most vulnerable position, and bring dignity, and such a spiritual way for people to understand what goes on and what hospice does. to understand what goes on and what hospice does. And Diane is the leader of this organization and that is, it all starts at the top. It starts at the top. We are fortunate to have a woman running an incredible nonprofit who helped, I'm sure, so many of you and so many who will understand what it is they do. But please pay attention to the story, because it is spooky in how it all started. So, I'd like to offer you, Ms. Diane Baldi-RN.
Well, good morning, everybody. This is so short, so it just will be out the door really soon. Thank you, Laurie. That was a beautiful introduction. Pleasure to meet you, Judge. I'm so happy you're here. While Laurie has asked me to do this, I do want to tell you how honored and humbled and really thankful I am for this. And as Candace had said, really shocked, so this is really, it's very meaningful to me. So, 15 years ago, I had a turning point in my career. At that time, I was already 15 years working in the hospice world. And then, an unexpected miracle occurred. I received a phone call one night from a Dr. Frank Bucci at my home, and whom I didn't know. He is an ophthalmologist in Wilkes-Barre. And he told me that my name had been given to him. He wanted to start a hospice. And I gratefully said, "Well, thank you, doctor, but I'm really good where I am. I'm not interested." And he, so he encouraged me to have a meeting with him, which I did that night. And so, this is how the story goes. Six months prior, now this is 15 years ago, six months prior to my meeting Dr. Bucci, his wife Angie died. By all accounts, she was a wonderful person and he wanted to start a hospice in her honor. So, before he went to California, he had asked the staff in his office in Wilkes-Barre to think about somebody they knew who could start a hospice for him. And then, he took off to California. So, he had been back from California now, and this is the story he told me. He said, he told me all about the wonderful, wonderful qualities and brilliance of his wife Angie. He told me that he wanted to start a hospice in her honor. So, he went to California and while he was in California, he knew, he said, "I had this feeling one day, I had this overwhelming sense that when I got back to Wilkes-Barre, somebody was gonna have, found the person who's gonna start the hospice for me." So, he goes back from, to Wilkes-Barre, goes back to his office. One of his nurses runs up to him and she says, "Dr. Bucci, I think I know the person who's gonna start the hospice for you." He said, "Oh, my God." He said, "I knew I was in California. I was walking along the base of Mount Baldi." Uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh. And so, this nurse, the color drains out of her face and she reaches into her pocket, my name, Diane Baldi, was on a piece of paper. So, not being one to test fate, I jumped off the cliff. I jumped off the cliff and the rest is history. So, today, thanks to many people in this room, Hospice of the Sacred Heart has provided uncompromising compassionate care to over 11,000 patients and families. I thank God for the many blessings I've been given. I thank my husband of 35 years. I picked the right one, Judge. 34, 34, 34. My kids, my gorgeous girls and my son and their families, because they provided me great support through all these years. They put up with a whole lot and they have a lot of confidence and that's meant so much to me. Don't look at my husband. I have to thank Dr. Bucci, above all, our founder, for his vision and his great faith in hospice. And my coworkers here, who I'm so proud to call my friends. I could not have never done this alone. Nobody could have done this alone. And I thank you and I share this whole honor with all of you. It is such a joy and privilege to go to work every day for Hospice of the Sacred Heart. And I'm gonna tell you why. We get, in this crazy healthcare world that we know and we experience, we get to restore dignity, kindness, care, compassion to patients and their families. We don't get to do that every day. But here's the thing, we actually give that same kindness and care to all of our employees. It's a beautiful, beautiful match. And I, the other thing I like to say about Hospice of the Sacred Heart, and my friends here will also agree, that at the end of the day, no matter what you do at Hospice of the Sacred Heart, if you answer the phone, if you're a social worker, if you're a nurse, if you're a volunteer, or if you're an administrator, at the end of the day, you get to go home and say, "I made a difference today." How many of us get to do that every day? So, just a few words in closing. I encourage all of you, if you haven't already, jump off that cliff. Believe in miracles. Know that nobody is ever sent to us by accident. And be the reason that people believe in the goodness of people. Thank you so much. I'm so very grateful.
I told you, doo-doo-doo-doo-doo. Telling it. And there's days that this happens and I go, "Oh, my God, it only happened, seriously? It's something. It's like a miracle space or something, I don't know." But it's the weird, Diane will constantly say, "You will love this story." I'm like, "Oh, my God." And then, I cry or something. It's just amazing. So, thank you to the work you all do and to all of the board who, as you can tell, I think we did a pretty darn good job of picking these ladies up here in organizations, didn't we? Yay, Chloe. So, I'd like to again thank everyone. I missed Fran Pantuso, who was here, who has helped me through this and taking all her photos and getting everything done. Chris Calvi, who is with the county, who's a wonderful guy, who also helped with a lot of things. And one of our wonderful board members, Ms. Brenda Bastoki's over here, doing a great job with Cathy Gavin and her staff. And of course, on the back of your program is the big thank you to Cathy and her staff for hosting and having us here at this beautiful facility. So, I am doing my, we're gonna pick Chris. Thank you, Chris, because I would have forgotten. We have the 50/50 and then you're free to go. So, thank you so much. We look forward to having you next year. Look out for our Health Seminar, which we're having in April of next year, and the Bookmark Contest in March, which will be here before we know it. So, again, thank you so much for everything that you do for our community and for being part of this. And Chris, come on up and we'll pick the 50/50. Get your tickets out, folks. Am I picking? No.